For the prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And give us not temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and power, and glory, forever and ever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. We will start with item D, the approval of minutes. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved from the April 1st, 2024 regular council meeting. Those will stand approved. Item E, citizen communication. If there's anyone in the audience or online that would like to address council for anything that is outside of the agenda, feel free to come forward and we will acknowledge that. For now, we'll move on to item F, reports from council committees. Item F1, the electric committee did not meet on April 8th, 2024 due to lack of agenda items. The water sewer refuse recycling and litter committee did not meet on April 8th due to lack of agenda items. The municipal properties, building, land use, and economic development did not meet on April 8th due to lack of agenda items, and the parks and recreation committee did not meet earlier tonight due to lack of agenda items. Item H, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. H1, resolution number 015-24, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the purchase of sodium chloride in cooperation with ODOT and declaring an emergency. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Yes, for many of you may remember, each year in the spring, we receive notification from the state of Ohio that we can enter into their purchasing agreement for salt. One other thing to point out is, just like in previous years, this usually shows up with very little notice. We are required to have this signed and back before we have another council meeting. So, the law department was gracious enough to get this thrown together Thursday. It came in Thursday. So, I believe May 3rd, and if you recall, April is a five Monday month, so we don't have another meeting. So, we were able to get it prepared. But what this does, it allows us to purchase salt as part of their pool. We tell them how much salt we need. This year, we're planning to request 100 ton. We had budgeted for 200, but the barn's quite full. We do want to stay on their list. We had budgeted 200 ton at $100 per ton. Last year, I believe, we paid $72 and some change. So, that should be plenty in the budget, but we are required to take 90% of what we order. So, we're just requesting this to be passed under suspension so we can get it in and be included in this year's salt contract with ODOT.
And they don't tell us how much it is, right?
They have not bid it yet, so we do not know the price. We've had years where we paid at lowest $32 per ton, and we had one year where we were near $130 per ton. But even if it does approach that high end, we've got enough in the budget since we're only going to request 100 ton.
Thank you, Chad.
So, what happens if we don't take the 90%? Is there a penalty to that?
The contract says we have to. So, if we didn't take it... Yeah, I mean, they're going to bill us for it. And we have room in the barn for 100 ton. We have room probably for a couple hundred ton, but right now, we have 1,700 ton sitting there. So, we're in good shape. But we want to stay on that list. If we were, there is concern, and I spoke with the county about this as well. We both have concerns if we take a year off, we may not be notified next year. Well, when we're only given three weeks' notice, we don't want to miss even the small window we get.
I would just like to...
And we won't take that delivery until after the first of the year.
I would like to just state that years ago, we couldn't get salt. And now that we've been doing this, we've always had salt. And we had no salt. There were bad winters, and we just didn't have any. I can remember Egyptian salt one year.
That was the one that's $132 per ton. We had to get it.
So, that we do this and stay on the list and not fall off, I think is important.
Do we get preferred pricing in that concept too? Since we're bulk?
We do, and the bids that the state receives are by region. Cleveland might be one price, Northwest Ohio, another price. But since it is the state doing this bulk order, it is much better than what we can get on prior.
Motion for suspension.
Thank you, sir. Marissa, please call the roll on suspension.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments before we vote on the resolution? Marissa, please call the roll.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
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 That will pass under suspension and under emergency. We will move to item I, the second reading of ordinances and resolutions. I1 is resolution number 009-24, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds in excess of $50,000 for the purpose of designing the reconstruction of East Washington Street Improvements Project and to award said project to Peterman and Associates, Inc., and declaring an emergency. Is there a motion?
A motion?
Second.
Nothing new with this legislation. We're finalizing the contract. I'm meeting with them tomorrow afternoon. So, hopefully, by the first meeting in May, we'll have the contract complete. But yeah, just no changes to the legislation itself.
Did you get the grant, the 850,000?
We haven't been told yet, but we turned in a good application. So, as soon as we get word, I'll be sure to pass that on.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? I'm hearing that. Marissa, please call the roll.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
That will move to third read. Item I2, ordinance number 011-24, and ordinance amending a section of chapter 939 of the City of Napoleon Codified Ordinances, specifically section 939.05 net metering, also amending ordinance numbers 056-12. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Chad?
As with this legislation, there's no changes. This adds commercial industrial load to allow us 100 kilowatt versus what we have in existing ordinance is 25. Still has the limit aggregate load of 3% and removes the limit of 75% of customers' personal usage load, but no changes to the legislation since the last meeting.
Any questions or comments from council?
So, I'm just asking again if it makes sense for the industrial portion of this to not have net metering, so still allow residential net metering, but not industrial. And that allows businesses to size themselves properly and doesn't reward power generation back onto the grid. Again, with my employer, it's a similar setup where we don't have the opportunity to backload the grid and take credit. And that helps dictate some of the sizing on that portion. So, I guess I'm just looking for commentary on either why the committee decided to go with that or if that had been looked at.
I don't know if the committee itself discussed that. And I'm not, I'll be honest, I'm not certain who is here that was in that discussion. I just know that the 100 kilowatt was what they went with because of so many other communities using that number. It was a compromise. I believe it was initially requested to be 400. And then with the other communities that were polled, it was found that 100 was where many of them were. I can't specifically...
That's accurate, Chad. Being on the committee, that was accurate. You're right. The research Andy had done.
There again, having not anything to do with this before, you've got to have a starting point.
Absolutely.
So, this seems to be a good starting point.
And I believe that was part of the discussion, was to start here. And if we want to reshape this in the future, we would have that opportunity. And I know this, as well as a couple of other pieces of legislation, we discussed that we might want to take a look at them periodically, whether it's annually or every three years. However, we want to do that, but we do have that option.
And I strongly agree with it's a good starting point. It's a step in the right direction. My fear is, with the funding that is available, the focus on solar with alternative green energy, now is the chance for some of our local businesses to take advantage of some of the federal funds that are available to them. I agree it's a good starting point. I just want to be as aggressive as we can to allow some of our businesses to continue to benefit from the funding. So, that's why I'm just asking council to make sure that we take all the necessary steps and look at it, and we're not just saying because other communities do this, but because it makes sense for us. If we come to that determination, I'm happy to agree with everybody and say, hey, cool. But I don't want to do it just because it works in other communities. I want to understand why is this what we're asking for our community?
Any other questions or comments? I'm hearing that.
Did you have some discussion with this, with the mayor? Or not the mayor, the city manager regarding? And we felt this was a, because I think I was at that meeting too, that this was a safe number to go with as a compromise for the system?
I like this as a starting point. And we'll see how the whole solar thing pans out here, maybe a year or a three-year basis. It's certainly open for suspension at that point.
Are there any other businesses asking about it?
No. AutoZone put up, they have panels, but they, for some reason, just dropped out. I haven't heard from them. Maybe they have panels up on the roof for a year now, but haven't gotten a call from them. And that was just at 2020, I believe.
Wasn't Custom Ag looking at helping others possibly install some of the, like they're looking at it not just for their own personal business, but also helping other businesses if they wanted to invest in installing solar?
Well, there are a lot of contractors out there right now that are pushing solar.
Pushing.
Yeah, because of the grant money.
That's what I thought they were aiming for it was, because help install it.
I know Andy had mentioned that, I had kind of mentioned the engineering studies last time and suggesting that that be part of the requirement to entry, is that the customer asking to do this, front that bill, and ensure that it is looked at by a third party to ensure that it's not going to disrupt our system or AMP or whoever that looks like needs to look at it, not just our customers, not just us, but somebody else to give their opinion. After thinking about it more, I think that it makes more sense to have a larger barrier to entry and get it right. So, I am concerned that we're not requiring additional engineering studies to look at this. And part of, respectfully with what Greg's saying, I mean, 100 is safe, but safe doesn't really tell me much. Like, what does safe mean? I mean, is 500 safe? Is a megawatt safe? I just, I'd like to see a larger focus on the engineering side and ensuring our grid is reliable and not affected. And I'm not seeing that in this current legislation.
Is it a fair assessment to say that we can keep an eye on things? So, if things start moving, we can make a movement?
Yeah, and the electric department monitors their system, and they'll be involved in any development that would occur, whether it be an existing business that would add this to what they have or a new development coming in. Greg and the electric department's always included in that discussion.
Anything else to add, Greg? Anything else from council? Marissa, please call the roll.
Jordan?
No.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, that will move to third read. Item J, third reading of ordinances and resolutions. J1, resolution number 007-24, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds in excess of $50,000 for the purpose of performing the 2024 sanitary sewer flow monitoring update and to award said project to Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc., and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Chad?
I'm still currently working on this contract with Stan Tech. At this time, I would request to table this legislation until I'm able to get a final contract in place. I would prefer not to have the legislation passed without the contract.
Absolutely. Is there a motion to table?
Table.
Motion table.
Marissa, please call the roll.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany? Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Thank you, Chad. We'll go to item K, good of the city. K1 is discussion or action, approval of the power supply cost adjustment factor for April 2024, SPSCA three-month average factor 0.01578 and JV2 0.062429. Chad?
I have notes here from the city manager, and this is not my language. His notes are slightly lower 3 MMA. I don't know if that's megawatts. And then otherwise, nothing significant to point out, so.
Kevin, can you add anything to that?
I guess what I could add to it is, compared to last month's, it is trickling down as we would see at this time of the year. Definitely within range where it's normally been at to or to a lower end. So, I'd suggest that we just pass this. There's no, nothing has happened in the electric world that has caused an increase nor a decrease at this moment.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to approve?
A motion.
Marissa, please call the roll.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom? Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Item K2, discussion or action, renewal of liquor permits in the city of Napoleon. Chad?
We did receive one conclusion in the packet. There's no action required. Ed, are you aware of the one that was applied for the liquor permit?
Which one in particular? I don't see it at all.
That's a question I had, to be honest with you. It doesn't give me the address here.
Is this for the city, for the law courts?
Is this the law?
The whole entire city, it all needs to be.
Oh, it's all of them?
Yeah.
This is just the reference. It's permits. Is there renewals for everybody?
Typically, typically, we would ask the chief if there are any complaints on any particular liquor licenses.
So, it is citywide on all the permits. Do you have anyone in particular that you have an issue with?
Do we have any issues?
I don't remember.
Thank you, chief.
So, in this situation, silence is acceptance. We don't have to vote.
Billy, do you know how frequently we have to review these?
Is it every year or twice?
It says every year.
Every year.
I don't remember.
Yeah, every year.
Remember individual ones or not. So, why?
Okay. Any questions or comments on this item before we move on? Okay. We'll move to K3, discussion or action to appoint Jeff Wies to the healthcare cost committee. That one seems pretty straightforward. I don't see anything to add.
Just so everyone's aware, who may be newer, all of the unions in the city, we have three unions, they all get two representatives to the healthcare cost committee. Non-bargaining gets two representatives, and the direct hires by council has two representatives. Chief Mack was one of the non-bargaining representatives with his retirement. We just need someone else appointed, and Jeff Wies offered to fill that role. So, we just asked for him to be appointed.
Is there a motion to appoint?
Motion.
Second.
Marissa, please call the roll.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross? Yes.
And thank you, Jeff, for doing that.
Item K4, discussion or action to approve PC 2405 special use or conditional use permit for small machine shop to build silencers with alcohol, tobacco, and firearms authorization. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, the planning commission met last Tuesday, and this was presented to us. And we had a little bit of a discussion just mainly around the, if there's going to be any disturbance to the neighbors, the size of the machines and things like that. And the residents here, Greg Snyder, came to answer any questions, if anyone has any. We did pass it unanimously. So, the next step would be, if council passes this, then I believe Greg would need to apply to ATF to actually get permission to be able to make the silencers.
Mr. Snyder, would you like to add anything?
No, not really. None of my neighbors complained, and one neighbor actually called Kevin and actually said it was a good thing. I plan to keep it really small and make sure the opportunity. And it's, the way Kevin said though, it's, you know, it's in my hands and it's something that can be taken away, though. And I don't take that lightly. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Once you do get the permitting and the patent for vice versa, so will you be selling that out of your garage or is that more like an online shopping?
I was thinking though, so by the grace of God, I came up with a couple ideas.
Hey, Greg, can I interrupt you for a sec? Can you come up to the podium? And then, just like the last time, you have put your name and address there. Since we're asking you questions, we have to have that documented.
So, my name is Greg Snyder. So, it'd be really, really small. And like you said, by the grace of God, I came up with this idea for designs that they haven't been made or nothing quite like it, from my understanding. So, if you guys would pass it, it would take about, from my understanding, about a year for the ATF before they even say I can do it. And then, it'd probably take another year or so for me to make them and design them and, you know, go through the patent process. So, it's a very, very long step. But my idea was, maybe I could sell them online, but if it goes successful, I'd probably have to get a shop at some point down the road. This just allows me to get it started and going. Pretty much, so. I don't plan on having people come to my house and selling them. You know, maybe I could sell them to gun shops or something like that, but that's, you know, that's quite a ways down the road, though.
Couple other questions I think we had was where he would keep them. And you said you have a safe inside your house where they would be stored so someone's not breaking in your house, trying to destroy your garage.
Yeah, they would be in a lock safe.
Wouldn't a, wouldn't sale from the house have to have a separate permit, though, anyway?
Yes.
Because that typically is not allowed in residential district.
I believe that's correct.
If that would come to that, that would have to have a separate permit.
Any other questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Marissa, please call the roll.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Full heck made me proud.
Item K5, discussion or action, award of the 2024 miscellaneous streets improvement projects. Chad?
Yes, I included a memo in your packet and a portion of it's on the screen. We opened bids last week for the 2024 miscellaneous street improvement project. We received two bids. The low bid was from Helms &amp; Son Excavating Incorporated, $1,040,801. It is our recommendation to award to Helms. They performed our paving operations last year. Excuse me. And I believe they did them also about six years ago. So, we've worked them a couple times. But we'd like to get it awarded so we can get it on their calendar because it is so expensive. Obviously, there's the entire list of streets. I believe there's 28 of them.
And 200,000 below the budgeted or projected price?
Yes, we are looking at some options, whether we want to just stop there or get a price for additional work. But if we do, it'll be limited to stay below the 1.2 million budget number.
Perfect. Any questions? Is there a motion to award a bid?
A motion.
Second.
Thank you. Marissa, please call the roll.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
We'll go around the table. Chad, I'm going to start from your side.
Let me find my notes. Mack was one of the non-bargaining representatives with his retirement. We just need someone else appointed, and Jeff Wies offered to fill that role. So just ask for him to be appointed.
Is there a motion to appoint?
Motion.
Second. Thank you. Marissa, please call the roll.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And thank you, Jeff, for doing that. Item K-4, discussion or action to approve PC-2405 special use or conditional use permit for small machine shop to build silencers with alcohol, tobacco, and firearms authorization. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, the planning commission met last Tuesday, and this was presented to us, and we had a little bit of a discussion just mainly around the... If there's going to be any disturbance to the neighbors, the size of the machines and things like that. And the resident here, Greg Snyder, came to answer any questions, if anyone has any. We did pass it unanimously. So the next step would be if council passes this, then I believe Greg would need to apply to ATF to actually get permission to be able to make the silencers.
Mr. Snyder, would you like to add anything?
No, not really. None of my neighbors complained, and one neighbor actually called Kevin and actually said it was a good thing. I plan to keep it really small, and they feel the opportunity. And it's... The way Kevin said though, it's, you know, it's in my hands, and it's something that can be taken away, though. And I don't take that lightly. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council?
Once you do get the permitting and the patent for vice president, so will you be selling that out of your garage, or is that more like an online shopping?
I was thinking, though, so by the grace of God, I came up with a couple ideas.
Hey, Greg, can I interrupt you for a sec? Can you come up to the podium?
Yeah.
And then, just like the last time, you have put your name and address there. Since we're asking you questions, we have to have that documented.
So my name is Greg Snyder. So it'd be really, really small. And like you said, by the grace of God, I came up with this idea for designs. They haven't been made or nothing quite like it, from my understanding. So if you guys would pass it, it would take about, from my understanding, about a year for the ATF before they even say I can do it. And then it'd probably take another year or so for me to make them and design them and, you know, go through the patent process. So it's a very, very long step. But my idea was maybe I could sell them online, but if it goes successful, I'd probably have to get a shop at some point down the road. This just allows me to get it started and going, pretty much. So I don't plan on having people come to my house and selling them. You know, maybe I could sell them to gun shops or something like that, but that's, you know, that's quite a ways down the road, though.
Yeah. Understood. Thank you.
Couple other questions I think we had was where he would keep them, and you said you have a safe inside your house where they would be stored, so if someone's not breaking in your house, trying to destroy your garage.
Yeah, they would be in a lock safe.
Wouldn't a... Wouldn't sale from the house have to have a separate permit, though, anyway?
Yes.
Because that typically is not allowed in a residential district.
I believe that's correct.
Yeah, so if that would come to that, that would have to have a separate permit.
Any other questions from council? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Marissa, please call the roll.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. I'm fully proud.
Item K-5, discussion or action, award of the 2024 miscellaneous streets improvement projects. Chad?
Yes, I included a memo in your packet and a portion of it's on the screen. We opened bids last week for the 2024 miscellaneous street improvement project. We received two bids. The low bid was from Helms &amp; Son Excavating Incorporated, one million, forty thousand, eight hundred and one dollars. It is our recommendation to award to Helms. They performed our paving operations last year. Excuse me. And I believe they did them also about six years ago. So we've worked them a couple times. But we'd like to get it awarded so we can get it on their calendar, because it is so extensive. Obviously, there's an entire list of streets. I believe there's twenty-eight of them. It's great.
And two-hundred thousand below the budgeted or projected price?
Yes. We are looking at some options, whether we want to just stop there or get a price for additional work. But if we do, it'll be limited to stable the one-point-two million budget number.
Any questions? Is there a motion to award bid?
No motion.
Second.
Thank you. Marissa, please call the roll.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.